We still are in public session. Area 58 is, the meeting is being taped by Area 58. How's that better? So, to start with, the Pledgued Alleged, so if you'll join us in that.
The nations will abide under the United States of America. To the children of which they stand, one nation under God, indivisible,天地一
So, we do have a six o'clock wage and personnel joint meeting. I'm going to just hold that for a few minutes so we can move through some of these other appointments with the police chief. We were a few minutes late here. So Chief, very first thing is a recognition of Sergeant Sterling and Officer Mike Barrowski. Has he changed his mind yet?
No.
Officer Mike Barrowski, on February 2nd, 2024, Sergeant Sergeant Sterling and Officer Mike Barrowski responded to 25 Anawan Drive to a report of an unresponsive patient in possible high-dead arrest. The officers responded immediately to this location and from arrival began CPR for the arrival of EMS. The officers quickly began life-saving medical care, which included the use of compressions and the EBM. After only five minutes of CPR by both HPD and HFD, the pulse was regained and the patient was transported to the hospital. Had it not been for the quick action of the officers at the scene, patients would not have, only survived as a medical emergency. Studies have shown that a predating minute medical buy versus a buy-in rate of an emergency. The officers immediately began having the proper equipment and training, gaining the ability to save a patient's life. Their actions in dealing with similar medical emergencies should be commended in the service of the community acknowledged. These officers then fight fighters who create professionalism, proper use of their training, experience, and equipment. Being successful conclusion, what might have been a tragic result for this town. I am sure that they continue to be quite active in count and half facts. Officers again should be commended for their actions in saving a patient's life. I gave a report of Captain Hogan's email for your review. So that's there, the events of February 2nd, 2024.
So, we also received from the fire department, Captain Hogan, a letter directed to the chief, a copy of a letter directed to the chief where he is congratulating Sergeant Sterling and Officer Barrowski on their work and their response and the, we're lucky to have you. We're lucky to have you for a few more minutes, but we've been lucky to have you. And we're lucky to have you for a long time, I hope. So, our board would like to congratulate you. Letters of commendation that we would like you to. I have the unique privilege of having been on the board since Sergeant Sterling was appointed the first time in 29 years. I also have the unique sadness to say goodbye, although I know you're coming back to us on part-time. And to congratulate you on a job well done. Although I would back over my time as a selectman and there's been certain appointments that have been fantastic, standout. You're one of them. And I appreciate that myself. The board does and the town of Halifax has been served so well that we, we're really on a mission. So, we'd like to congratulate you again on your well-earned retirement. Change your mind, up to the last minute.
Thank you very much. I'll be open. Thanks.
Can we give Sergeant Sterling one more good round of applause? All right, I want to get a nice picture of the position. Picture in this. Chief, you want to join?
Yes, we can join here.
All right, three, two, one. All right, that's good. Chief, we got one more thing.
A couple more things, yeah. So, one door closes, not one opens. So, so I'm here today in front of the board to ask for the board's vote to recommend Daniel Shaheen for appointment as a police officer to replace Sergeant Sterling. We continue to work towards having a full complement of officers and with Daniel's appointment by our department, we will have reached that goal. Daniel Shaheen is a great candidate and I feel a great addition to our department. He graduated from a full-time MPTC academy in 2022. Then began his career with the Orleans PD. He then left Orleans and took a position with Simmons College in Boston. He has a bachelor's degree in English and has worked in the Pembroke School system as a substitute teacher. He brings a great attitude and work ethic to our team. He lives in Pembroke with his parents, so I can have Daniel come up if the board must ask him a few questions.
Yes, thank you. So, this is a formality. Chief recommended you. I can't imagine you more than to say no. He's done a good job for us. But can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and introduce yourself to the two Halifax?
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Shaheen, as Chief prefers to stay. I've been born and raised in Pembroke, Massachusetts, neighboring town. It's always been my dream to become a police officer and I'm lucky enough to achieve that goal. Halifax specifically, the South Shore in general has always been my home. It's always been a place where the culture and environment is, wherever I love to be and would like to stay for the rest of my remaining life, if possible. But with Halifax specifically, people always talk shop, other officers, where it gets around about the departments and towns, about, you know, where is a good place to work? And Halifax has always been the one place that stood out. And I remember last year, I just missed the application for the previous appointment and I immediately signed up for the email list. So as soon as there's another opportunity, I jump on it. And I'm lucky enough to be here, standing in front of people all day. And my goal, my ambition is just to make a difference, become a more impactful person and make everyone's life a bit more ease and to help the community in any way possible.
Very good. Any questions from the board or me?
Daniel, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have a conflict resolution style? Let's say you approach a scene, there's some conflict. What is your approach to conflict resolution?
It's always to use as much restraint and always to use as much verbal, just to diminish any sort of situation in conflict as much as possible. If you start low, slowly, and talk to them calmly, usually they can reciprocate and it will help in our escalated situation. And that's always the best tool is your mouth. Not any hands, weapons, anything like that. The best tool in your arsenal is your words. And that's always how I go to every single call, if possible.
Thank you.
As John said, chief picks the best ones. So, I'm going to be happy to see you out there, rolling around. You got some big shoes to fill now that he's gone.
Amen.
And he's smirking because he knows. No, I'm greatly appreciate that you picked the town. And I can't wait to see you rolling around.
Thank you.
So, do we have a motion to appoint Daniel Shaheen as a full-time police officer?
I'll make that motion to appoint Daniel Shaheen to the police officer's Halifax PD.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Officer Shaheen.
We're going to have a ceremony on March 12th. So, all of.
And do you have another one for us, Chief?
Last.
You're going to need a vacation after this, aren't you?
So, I have Tina Olivera and I'm recommending that she be appointed to the role of matron for the term of July 1, 2023 through June 30th of 2024. She's a Halifax resident. She's, comes from a family of law enforcement professionals and has prior experience as a matron performing those duties in East Bridgewater. She has her BLS and ALS and PAAS certifications as well as first aid. She's scheduled to attend matron training at Plymouth Academy from March 18th to 21st. And then obviously her appointment would be contingent on her successfully passing the training, which I have no doubt she will. So if Tina could come up, look and ask a few questions of Tina.
Hi. So, just want to introduce yourself to the town of Halifax if you want to be one of our newest matrons.
So, I'm Tina Olivera. I decided to move myself and my family here to Halifax about five years ago. And it's been delightful. My son goes to Silver Lake in Kingston and he's the starting quarterback there. And very proud of that. I come from a nursing background as well and I would love to protect and serve. Come from a family that does that very well and I'm pretty sure I can do the same.
Great. Thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions?
Well, I'm excited, yeah.
Thank you, I am too.
So, do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Rivera?
Yeah, I will do. I will gladly make the motion to appoint Tina Olivera as a Halifax police matron pending her successful completion of her matron training at the Plymouth Academy.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is that it for you, Chief? Oh, yeah. Thank you, good job. All right, so I apologize, we are running a little bit late. We do have a six o'clock wage and personnel public hearing. So, we'll need a, we'll need a motion to open the.
Public hearing?
I hereby call the finance committee.
Okay, so the finance committee has opened their meeting.
Do we need a joint call to do this?
Hereby open the Halifax Finance Committee meeting at 6:60 PM.
All right, we take the motion now to open the wage and personnel public hearing.
I can make that one?
Sure.
And wait a second.
Say.
It's a joint committee, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for proposed changes to the wage and personnel bylaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. So, what we have here. So I guess the first thing that we just.
So we have the proposals. So this is the first proposal. There is a second, this is my. So take the first one.
All right, so the board, so the combined wage and personnel committee, combined boards, which serves as a wage and personnel committee, we have received two, two written proposals. So the first one, the first one is from the library. And the library proposal wants to establish a position of substitute librarian at grade four, step one. That's submitted by the library director. So, Chief, do you want to let speak to it? Yeah, so it's recorded.
I am Jean Galant, library director. Sorry, I have a cold. So this position was established or recommended to me by the board of trustees. The board and I, you can't hear me or?
No, no.
Okay.
I will close the door.
The board and I talked about the creation of this position because over the past couple of years, I've had to close the building because of staffing issues. I have a staff of seven and over the last couple of years, the first time was because of COVID. And we had, like, it was on a Saturday and we had three people out because of COVID. And then I didn't have anybody to call in, so I had to close the building. Very recently, I had to close the building because I had staff get sick. I had one person in Portugal and I had somebody else that had COVID. And so I had to close the building for two hours on a Thursday and a Friday. So I never want to close the building. It's just not the right thing to do for our patrons. We take pride in the number of hours that were open. We talked at the finance committee meeting the other night about the Holmes Public Library being open for 41 hours a week when the state only tells me I have to be open 25 hours a week. And we do that and people are used to that. It's always the way the library's been. So when you close the building, they're like, oh, you're closed. They're not happy. And I don't blame them. So, we have a great staff and a great library and this would just help me to keep the library open. I do, it's not a money issue here because I have every year budgeted into my budget a certain amount of money to cover staff issues. So if somebody's sick, usually I will ask another staff member to come in to cover. We have a trustee policy that says two people have to be in the building at all times, which is just a safety concern. So, that's kind of how it came about. I did a survey of, went on the library director email list there and I did get 12 responses of different libraries that have substitute positions. And those are only, you know, the people that came back to me. And it's all, they pay them all differently and it was all kind of a scattered thing. But every person that got back to me said what a help it is to have somebody that they don't have to close the building. Sometimes you do because in, a staff member who actually works at the library now, leaves the director of the women's library, get back to me and he has substitutes, but sometimes he still does have to close the building. And people, I'm not happy with that. So it's just kind of a preventative thing to kind of keep me open. And like we talked to the finance committee the other night, how important it is and the benefits that I get for being open 41 hours a week when I only have to be open 25 hours a week. We saved a considerable amount of money in our materials expenditure because I'm open as many hours a week as I am. So, you don't want to hear my spiel from the finance committee. We're all aboard with that, but.
So, it's a substitute librarian, so that would mean that it would hire somebody that would be kind of on call, like a substitute teacher, that type of thing?
Yeah, so I've never actually been involved in anything like this, so I'm not really sure how that would go. Cody and I talked about it a little bit and we talked about doing something about per diem. So I think the board of trustees would like to create the position, put it on the warrant and then my thought is I would go out to, you know, to advertise for a substitute position, but only call them in if I needed them. So I'm not sure really how that would work, but if somebody, I'll certainly see to that, that would be good too.
Okay, so we've got it here and then we'll take comments from the board or questions?
So, Jean and I have discussed this. I don't see why we can't do it right now with our current makeup. We have a library associate position. It's a grade four, which is what you're recommending. You would just hire someone per diem. You hired a library associate per diem. The bylaw doesn't set out how many hours a week we give a library associate. If you have the budget, you could advertise this today, you know, this week if you wanted. This is, it's just kind of redundant because we already have the library associate position at a grade four. If you were looking to bring this in at a library substitute, you know, grade three or lower than your current grade four, then in my opinion, you would need to amend the bylaw. But the position already exists, you're just looking to bring in for a lower amount of hours. So we can sort of, we're forward with it and just go.
Is anybody, is anybody already an associate librarian?
We have said that, or what?
So, right now I have five library associates and assistant director and, no, I have four library associates, a library technician, an assistant director, and the library director.
Okay.
So I have five associates and the associates really have the brunt of the responsibilities in the building as far as working the circulation desk and understanding, you know, all that goes into working the circulation desk.
So how would she work that? Like how would she, as another associate that was not, or was a per diem? Say, how would we hire them as a per diem?
Yeah, as needed per diem. The pay they're recommending is the grade four, which is what we, you know, all our other library associates are, that's the position. The hours would just be different, which, you know, that's not a bylaw request for different hours. As long as you have a budget, because that budget is, you know, a big part of it.
So, in my library budget, every year I have a line that is for extra staffing. And if I don't use it, it just gets turned back to the town. Generally, I turn back a significant portion of that, it's like $1,500. So, and it's always, it's always been that. And so I use, I use that if somebody, if a library associate wants to work extra hours because somebody's out, even if, you know, maybe a really busy Saturday and I ask somebody to come in. So it's just that extra staffing hours that's already in my budget.
Okay. Open up to the board, let me see if the board has any questions. And the board's everybody.
Right.
We're a big, huge board. Is anybody any questions?
So, just a couple. So I'm, just to dovetail into what Cody has already probably logically stated, is there's a position there already? So is there a difference in the role between a library associate and this substitute librarian that you're proposing? And what would that specifically be?
So I have, I have four library associates. One, their main responsibility is to cover the circulation desk. One is to cover the children's area. One is to cover the cataloging area and one is sort of a customer service librarian. I think that one has changed a bit. So, all of those library associates know how to work the circulation desk. They know how to do readers advisory. They know how to search for a book. They know how to answer a reference question. So all of their roles are kind of, you know, intertwined. They have their own specific duties. So if I needed somebody, it means that I only have one associate in the building. So that means that I need to bring in a person that can help work the circulation desk and be another body in the world.
Right, so why can't that just be another library assistant?
Because sometimes I don't have another library associate there outside.
Right, but you're talking about hiring somebody.
Right.
So why aren't you just hiring another library assistant?
Because that would be another, like, whole position.
It's already available, step forward, grade one, library assistant.
Right, but if I, I guess I misunderstood.
Not just to be free, Jim, but I feel like the duties you're talking about are already laid out. I don't think, to Jim's point, we need to create a new position because you're looking for a library associate essentially to do those duties.
Right.
We already have created that position.
Right.
It's just we're going to hire somebody on a per diem basis at that level that's already been established, right? Is that kind of what I'm getting, right?
Right.
So, I'm a fan, if we can, of keeping it simple, you know what I'm saying? Like, don't create another position if we already have the duties of that position already spelled out. So I would be a fan, if we can, Jean, of, I've just, you have the money to do it. Like Cody said, advertise tomorrow, library associate, spell out the per diem, you know, situation and I think you're ready to go as opposed to trying to create a new position that might kind of confuse things a little bit. I mean, if I'm saying that right, is that kind of what?
No, that makes sense because if you're going to wait till we put it on the warrant and then wait till they found out on it, it's just going to delay you executing on getting.
So I agree. I agree. I guess I didn't understand your question. I agree with Cody. I didn't, I didn't know that I could do that until.
You're a public leader.
Yeah. But I didn't know that I could, I could do that. But I do think that that is a, a good solution to the problem that I have. I just want to try not to close the building and to be able to call someone in.
Jean, we disagree. You disagree.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I will recognize it, just wait, just wait. Give us a minute. Wait, hold on, hold on.
Trustees are saying this is a.
Okay, hold on. We have to do this orderly, so just hold on. Jean? Yeah, okay, all right. So we've got that already, everybody understands, okay. So, do you have, you have a comment you want to make? You come on up.
Oh, yeah. Come on up.
Ah, you got to come up to them, I have a phone in the corner. No yelling from the back, you can't yell from the back, you got to get right up.
My question is mostly regarding your per diem suggestion. Would that be one person?
You can hire as many as you want.
Okay.
As long as the, so the job description exists, right? Town meeting, the town has approved a job. And then with that, the town approves a budget of some sort to fund that job. How operationally we fill that is, you know, depending upon the department or, so if you have the budget, reasonably we could bring in five people.
What I think was being said is to hire somebody. The way I can develop a vision here would be more like if a teacher calls out and there's a.
Cover a little portion of the.
And there's a bank of people who could see that that's an available day. Those are available hours to people who are substitute librarians and that they could just say, yes, I'm available and I know where that library is. I would like to take that. That's, we want to get Holmes into that kind of a system so that we don't have to close for staffing problems.
How often does that happen?
She just said it's happened a handful of times over the past two years. That the past.
Is that six? Is that 10? Is that 20?
Like three.
Three. Three out of 600 days.
Right, well, the other thing the board, we discussed earlier when we meant to approve this language was that what we also hope is that people, I don't want to speak for the librarians, but will maybe stay home sick if they shouldn't stay home sick. We have people who come in and can't finish their shift. Whereas maybe if they knew that the library wouldn't close if they called out sick, that they would have that opportunity to say, am I going to make it through this shift or are we going to have to close? That we give our employees just the backup that we feel that they are entitled to, to take care of their health.
Sure, I understand that. And I would concede that there are people who I guess feel that the library being open is risking their health. But I think there's other socioeconomic drivers there that we're not talking about, like, you know, I need the money to pay my electric bill.
Or the library.
For, yeah, whoever's working it. I just don't see the need to have an additional position. That's really.
It's not really a position so much as an opportunity. It's not coming out of.
The proposal we're discussing is to create a position.
So, sorry, if I can, just, so I just want to clarify because we've gone a couple of different directions here. So, the original proposal was to create this position, grade four, step one, right? The substitute librarian. But in subsequent conversations that we've had here tonight, it's. But in subsequent conversations that we've had here tonight, it's transitioned over to essentially adding on additional associate positions. Because that rule was already spelled out within the bylaws of seven, right? Is that, is that accurate?
There it was.
So I think, so just, so just to, just hear this out for one second. So I think what everyone's saying here is if the position is already there as an associate, you can go ahead and hire as an associate. And to Cody's point, if you want to bring five people in so that your bank is bringing even more from, than the additional one you're asking for here, then it's a win for you, right? Because now you have five additional resources opposed to the one you're asking for. So I think that's where the disconnect is.
You could bring five people to just one.
I think you guys already have the power to do it.
Well, the only, it's only a budgetary issue at this point, so if you have, whatever money you have in your budget for substit-, essentially for substitute librarians, we just go towards substitute librarian.
Now, is there something, because at the board, we had, or the trustees, we hadn't seen anything that was a similar per diem payment for a different department. Is there something set up that we can just go back and, so that we as the trustees can understand how that would work?
If you just take your library associate doc, job description, and when you go to post it, instead of, you know, right now you say twenty hours a week or eighteen hours a week, literally put per diem as needed, that's as simple as that. And then pay would be a grade, pay would be grade four, what's approved, exactly what you're looking to accomplish, which Jean, we had talked about this, Jean, in that you can, you can accomplish this now. If you get me a job description with this per diem stuff, I'll review it, have our labor council review it, and we'll get it posted. They will have to be employees at the time. It's not like you could just call, you know, a neighbor and say, hey, can you work this afternoon? They'd have to be, you know, go through the auditing process and be employees.
Oh, no, right, they have to be qualified and Jean would have to have selected them as being part of, okay.
At the end of the day, you're just, you're still managing to that bottom line of your budget, right? So you have a certain amount of money from a personnel standpoint. You're still managing to that same number, depending on however many people you bring up for it.
Yes, so you call in sick and Jean's the substitute, she comes in. As long as it stays in that budget that is given. And then, all right, well, Jean did a mockment, so I came into that. You know, you have numerous people that can jump into that position because it's part diem, you know what I mean?
And then that would be the grade, okay?
Of a library associate.
Still the grade four.
You can do exactly what you were looking to do, just right now we don't have to go through this process. We're not looking to change anything. We're looking to propose it. It's exactly what you want to do. Just you already have the tools to do it. We don't need to change anything.
So the duties of this position of this associate is already in place. It's not going to change, correct? You're not going to make them in charge, not your associate to be in charge of the library.
Right.
Yeah, it's a filling.
So, I would say to that, so if I'm out and there's a library associate that is scheduled to work and all other three library associates called in sick, and then my assistant director called in sick. I would not be calling somebody in to replace my assistant director for the day. I would be calling somebody in so that I have two associates in the building at the same time.
With the same job description?
With the same job description. So it would be the same thing as the, I guess, the library technician who is at a grade two. So if she called in sick and I didn't have another associate, I would never really see that happening because I have an assistant director and then four other associates and then me. I could, I could, would probably bring it in a, in a substitute at a still a grade four, even though they're replacing her, because the point is to have somebody in the building.
But that's all.
It's operational, that's your, that's your.
And just to clarify, Jean, you're saying basically you would, you would get fill-ins, let's say you had three people up. You wouldn't necessarily look for three fill-ins. You'd look for just as many fill-ins as you need to keep the library open for that period.
Right. You know, I could be looking at my budget saying, well, we have this program today too, and so I might need two, you know, but everybody, right.
Watch it.
More money. That could sound like I'm at home, no.
Okay, does anyone else have comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jean. All right, let's go on to what Cody had presented for us here, which is a lot.
So I did send this out. A lot of it is really just cleaning out the bylaw, matching the current, matching the current practices. There's things in there, like every job posting is supposed to be approved by this committee. I mean, we haven't done that in a long time. It goes through my office and it goes usually to our HR council, labor council. He looks at it as part of our agreement with him, and then we send it out. So it's really just proving it, or just making it match our current practice. There are a few things of substance, one of them being a two percent COLA for all of our non-union personnel for the year. So just taking the wage schedule from last year and swapping it up to two percent. One of the other items is performance evaluations, so we want to make sure that we're conducting them. And also, the wording in there was very unclear as to what level you got a step at. Did you get it that satisfactory? Did you get it above satisfactory? Step increases should really be a reward. You know, a cost of living adjustment is exactly that. It adjusts cost of living. But a step increase is more of a merit, right? You earn that. So the proposal would be to change that to, you'd have to receive an above satisfactory performance evaluation in order to get that step. So, and if you get that, you get the step, and if you don't, then, you know, you get just your cost of living adjustment and not the step. It's one of the concerns that appeared. What's that?
That one I'd like to speak to once you get there.
Oh, sure. It's one of the concerns I've heard from staff is that, you know, they feel like they're, you know, there may be employee A who does their job. They do their job okay, you know, they don't go above and beyond. And then you have an employee who goes above and beyond regularly, and the year comes and, right, they're both getting that same increase. So the idea is to incentivize employees, is incentives, go above and beyond and, you know, do a great job. One of the other changes was, as a result of the compensation classification study, one of the areas that we were really behind in was personal days. We get two personal days right now. Most communities do three or four, so my recommendation was to increase that to three days. We have a sick leave bank in this bylaw. I really just rewrote that, so it's, it's just more formal. Nobody had been at, working or keeping track of the sick leave bank. There was a three-member board committee, and that didn't exist. So really just got rid of that process of it and, and it get more streamlined.
Hey, Cody, just a quick question.
Sure.
The trend in probably everywhere else that I've worked and, and been, they have begun giving, like, just a bucket of hours to employees at the end of the year, whatever, two hundred and fifty, five hundred, to use however you want, sick time, vacation time. Is that something we would be considering or looking at to make kind of like the tracking just a little easier? Because then once the employee has the hours, it's up to them to use them, knowing that if they don't use them by the end of the year, they don't roll over.
Yeah, it, it is. It's something I've been looking at since I've gotten here, actually. It's just changing over to that PTO-style system. I'm not sure we're there quite yet, but it is something we're looking at. One of the concerns that I've heard from employees is, you know, we give a good amount of sick time, fifteen days a year, and employees really treat that sometimes as like a short-term disability. So they'll bank them and then, God forbid, something happens, well, they may have a couple of months worth of sick time to take. So I think if we were to implement something like that, we would need to look at offering some sort of short-term disability policy. So I do think it's the direction, municipalities are actually even going in that direction. I just don't think we're there quite yet. There's further, further investigation needs to go into it.
What happens to the accrued sick time when the employee leaves?
They don't get paid out.
So they can't take that as part of their retirement?
We have our police contract. There's a few people grandfathered in to that, but that's not part of the new contract. Nobody coming in gets that benefit.
And none of the town employees have access?
Correct.
So there's no bylaw at all?
What's that?
There's no bylaw?
For a sick time now. No, we're in a contract, we derive it.
It's not like I'm leaving every month.
For not anymore.
Does that carry, carry year over year, so that they have fifteen days, they shouldn't carry it to next year for thirty days?
Correct, for a sick time, yes.
And does that cap? Twelve hundred hours?
Yeah.
Or twelve hundred days?
No, twelve hundred hours. So there is a benefit to eventually transitioning to that PTO, as long as we can provide an alternative option, you know, so people feel they have a safety net and something to work out.
And if there's no buyout on that twelve hundred hours at the end of their term with the town?
The only liability that we end up having is a lot of times, as people get closer to retirement, maybe there's an elective surgery or something that they need to take, and you'll see that towards the end of their tenure, right, to use on that sick time. But then, you know, if you just decide to leave or retire, you don't get paid out right now. There's no, if we're not obligated to, we have to pay out vacation time, but there's no obligation for sick time.
And that's the same for us, right? There's no obligation for us.
Correct, yeah. So those are the main points of this. If there's particular questions, I'm more than happy to answer those. Like I said, the idea really was just to consolidate this and, and is this language in here existing regarding union employees? Well, the bylaw doesn't apply to union employees, so I need to, you know, clean that up.
I have one, I do have one question on the, I guess it's, it's under the rank of service bonus, so.
Longevity?
Yeah. We have page, Jim? What's that?
What page? Thirty-five?
On that page. It's thirty-five, take thirty-five dash two one two zero. So I get the forty off, pardon me, press it off? So what's the, what's the reason we require longevity bonus for, you know, the rest of the twenty hours?
Well, because there's still, we still have a lot of part-time positions in town. They're, they're permanent, but they're part-time. So we still want to reward those people who, you know, have committed to the town. It's a lower amount in view of they are the under twenty hours per week. But we still want to recognize people that have committed service to the, to the town, even if it's on a full-time basis. That's not a change, that's, that's just.
That's something that's been effective for years.
I, I understand that, I understand, but I get it for, for a time for full-time employees. For someone who's under twenty hours, who's carrying a sick job somewhere else, that doesn't, doesn't make sense for me to reward someone who could be somewhere else as well at the same time. That's just me, yeah.
Okay, any other comments from the, from your personnel board or what? Any comments from the public? Everybody wants to speak to anything?
So when, when you're thinking about the step increases and the evaluations, and you're saying that they can't get a step increase unless they go above and beyond, I want you to think about the fact that usually when someone comes in, just years of experience, if they're doing a satisfactory job, even being there a year gives them more experience, and I think they should be able to get a step. I agree with Cody that we, we want to encourage them to go above and beyond. I think it's penalizing them, though, by saying you don't get a step unless you go above and beyond. And also, if we have an employee who truly exceeds expectations, really puts himself out there, why can't we then give that employee two steps? So I want you to think about that part when you're deliberating about this. Because we want to make this a merit increase, then let's make it a merit increase. Let's not just say, well, everyone gets a step, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. But if someone really puts themselves out there and goes above and beyond, let's be able to give them more than one step. I think that we've had people in town who have deserved that, and if you're going to look at that, I think we should consider it.
Any other discussion, any other questions? Okay, so I guess we close this hearing. We do have to schedule another meeting, I guess, to talk about suggestions on the time.
I guess, whatever, everyone's available. What we can do is, if you guys are able to, I know it's a lot, a lot of information here, if everyone's able to do a deep dive, and if you email me with individual points that you'd like to discuss, then you can really go right to next meeting. And I want to make sure that I address everyone's concerns and points they have, so.
Did you guys make your next meeting work?
No, I'm saying what date you.
Uh, we don't have one scheduled yet.
We want to check with Todd and Cheryl as well.
Yeah.
So I think Tuesday, Wednesday is what Cheryl said.
Tuesdays and, yeah, Tuesdays.
I thought it was Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
For Cheryl. During tax season.
I think this is just a chat before, so.
Yeah, he's traveling.
Yeah, he's traveling today for business. What are you thinking, Cody?
Well, um, let's see, no Tuesdays, right, Cheryl, okay. Wednesday the sixth, that's a week from tomorrow.
Day after election.
Yeah, we got that double meeting on the fourth, by law and finance committee on the fourth.
Six is fine.
No, the fifth is the last.
The fifth is the last.
That's six.
As long as DJ. That's just, that's just, he's, I.
You want to do the first case?
Yeah.
Can, can we hear the first?
I have some team battle here.
What day do you think it will be?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the thirteenth?
What day is that?
The thirteenth.
Thirteen, we follow the thirteen. He's only changing a whole different level.
Do we have time to do that?
I mean, I think so. I think as long as everyone looks and addresses their concerns and sends them to me so I can work to have a resolution. I really don't foresee us in the near, any, next meeting, we should, we should be able to come to an agreement, I think, of what, what you guys want to recommend.
That's why I asked for the initial week, because to go up through all this.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Do you want, Cody, would you like a deadline for us to get back to you?
As soon as possible.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I can't.
You want to say it's a deadline and then?
Within reason, it's by the end of next week if you get it to me.
Yeah, because I don't know how Todd.
Yeah, Todd.
I don't know how Todd's going to be gone, you know, he didn't stay.
Yeah, well, if he can't make it, we can always just ask him to send us his comments, and we can make sure they're addressing.
Six o'clock work? Six o'clock every time?
Yeah, it's work for, yeah, six o'clock.
Six o'clock on Wednesday and Thursday.
And then I'm.
Okay, so that all being said, we go, take a motion now to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close tonight's public hearing.
Second. There's a motion, a second to close the wage enforcement public hearing. Any discussion? All those things, aye?
Aye.
unanimous, and our next waiting personnel meeting will be on March thirteenth at six p.m. Public hearing.
We did have one more, did you tell them? For those, yeah, waiting personnel. It was the revised performance evaluations. I sent those out. I'm not sure if we've had a chance to look, but if you want to push off to the next meeting, we can. These, we have a performance valuation system in place. The form that's utilized seems to be a little bit different by every department. So my goal was to just streamline this. I worked with our labor council, developed these forms, one set for department heads, one set for the rest of the staff, you know, they can just shift forward easy. But I'd like to have you guys adopt them, and then we're going to have training with our labor council, with all the department heads, on how to use these forms and really do a nice performance valuation.
Will you have those in these patents?
I, you do. I don't think it's going to happen. Uh, I, you do, I don't think it's meant to that.
So Cody, it's standardized across all departments, correct?
Yes. So that, and that's the idea, that's the goal, is to make sure we're all using the same forms.
Correct.
And then just, one, one for department heads, and then one for nondepartment.
So, question, you want to take it up on the thirteenth?
Might as well give everybody time to review them, and like I say, I'm not sure what Todd's schedule is, but gives him a little time to look at that as well.
Okay, so the thirteenth will be a discussion of wage of personnel, as far as a decision on recommendation, and then also the employee evaluation. Okay, so I guess we need a motion to reserve wage of personnel.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so moved. Do we have a second to do that? And discussion, all those things, aye? Yeah, so have a motion from the finance committee to adjourn?
Aye. Motion, motion. Little backward, a little down. Paul in favor?
Aye.
No, aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
What kind of guy?
That's done. So, uh, Jeremy, just to stick around a little bit, I think the national, we'll take up this, uh, this discussion, getting better support.
Speaking to Michael McDonald, enter.
Accuse himself of this. Go forward. And Mr. Dezzarella, has something to tell us about?
Good evening. How many were for, selectmen, here for, the property that's under, and has to come to a solar field, and that it's been in agriculture for over ninety years, and I've found it over fifty, since nineteen sixty-eight, I can find that, I, I just need a, a letter from the board that it said that it was, it is still under agriculture, and it doesn't fall under the program that they, that D O E R program that is under the habitat of, you know, like, spotted turtles and all of that. It's been found over ninety years, and under that, under the farm act, under sixty-one A, it does not qualify for being a habitat for any, any animals, because you're turning that sort of all the time, and there's no way that the, any animal that would, you know, you know, live in that condition, because that, that means either chilled in the springtime, and it's still in the park, it does not qualify for, for the, for the habitat for any, you know, any small animals, or lizards, or turtles, or anything, you know. I just need an encouragement from the, the, the selectmen that it's been under agriculture, and it's still under agriculture, under sixty-one A, in the town of Halifax, and there's other lands that are being produced for solar farms on, on River Street, and they're a lot wetter, water-beamed properties than what I have. It's on, my land is high, it's all dry, it doesn't qualify for what they're taking it, it does.
Okay, I don't think I understand this, do you understand the issue here?
I think it may be beneficial if you have like a draft letter or something that you'd like the board of kind of what they're looking to say, just so we know exactly what.
They're just looking to, to say that it's, that it doesn't fall under the, she.
Yeah, see, I, I was reading the letter, but I could, to me, to me it's a little.
It doesn't, it's not a heritage and endangered species program, it doesn't fall under that, because it, there is no endangered species on that piece of land, and that piece of land was twenty-two acres, the town of Halifax brought, and I sold on the other half.
So, you, you own the property on sixty-nine Summit?
Yes, yes, and the people that are, that are doing the solar panel, they came through in front of the boards, they got the, they got the approval, and they were going through it for the last couple of years, and all of a sudden, now they, they got into a, a little stall because of the, the heritage.
Is, is, is the solar, or the thought, the proposed solar field on your property?
Yes.
Okay, and you want it there, or you don't want it there?
What's that?
You want it there? You, you want it, you want the solar property?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I mean, they, they already committed themselves to, to, lost some of the money that, that they, that they came up and now, they say it's, it's a native species now, it, there isn't. I might go tomorrow and, you know, till that, that thing over, and for the spring, and planting a lot of crop. I stopped doing it for three years, because they were going through the process of, you know, acquiring the permits, they acquired the permits, it's already been registered in the Plymouth County, you know, in registered deeds, and.
Well, let me ask you, so this letter that we have here from Jacob Seaman?
Yes.
Is that the fellow that wants to put in the solar?
Yes, yes.
And so what he says, uh, that, that D O E R, I suppose that's a government agency, rejected the application, uh, they're looking for, they're looking for an exception, and then what it says is, hit a snag due to its location within the core habitat designated by the natural heritage, endangered species, making it ineligible for the smart program, so that must be what they want to do.
Yeah.
And then, their engineer is saying that despite all the farming, he argues that, that the, that because you've been actively farming it for so long, it's diminished its significance as a core habitat.
It's only been, it's only been out of farming for three years.
Okay.
It has to be out of farming for over ten, twelve years before, then you have a lot of vegetation, you could grow on it, small trees and stuff like that. Right now, it's nothing but a, a ten acre field, you know.
Okay.
So maybe it would be beneficial if you were to provide the report from the engineer, just saying that, exactly what this letter says, that.
They came back, they came back, a couple of days ago, and the one that you, it's under sixty-one A, they wanted to know if it was under sixty-one, it's still under sixty-one A, and I didn't take it out, because if I did take it out, it would be, I would have to pay a higher tax burden. Now, when they take it over, when they put the solar field in, but they're not digging in the ground, they're just putting holes in the ground, and when they take it over, it becomes a, a piece of property that they have to pay full tax.
A commercial property, right?
Yes.
Okay, but so, so what, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what are we, what do we, what do you want us to do?
There is a letter from the selectmen that it, it's been under agriculture for a long time, and it's never been an issue that would, for the heritage, you know.
Okay, I'm not sure about how to word the natural heritage.
So I think, I think it would be, if the board was supportive, it's in the wrong lines of, the board agrees with the licensed civil engineer, that the farming, of the, you know, the historic farming of the property has diminished its significance as a core habitat of their species.
I can't really speak about that, but I can, we can easily agree that, I think, that the land's under fifty-one A, I think that's a matter of public record.
Under sixty-one A, it's a, it's already been under agricultural for, in the nineties, it was under agriculture, and when I came here in sixty-eight, I, I found that land, and the land was right in the land of the person that owned it, and he owned it since the nineteen fifties, and it was all, all of a sudden.
So, I, I seem in favor of.
Yeah, I mean, within reason, so I think the question is, it's been agriculture.
It's all the time.
It's always been agriculture, you said you stopped three years ago when this process started.
Yeah, when they went through the process, I stopped doing it, because they needed to go in.
To go in and start spacking it out, yeah.
So they go in, I don't want to put a crop on there, and all of a sudden, they're, they're trespassing on it back and forth, and it's been recorded in the, on the British deed that it's ready to go for solar panels, you know.
Okay, and then, just a clarification, Mr. Dezzarella, is it that the, the qualifications have changed with the state since when you started? I guess we.
I think it's that national.
Yeah, the regulations, D O E R changed the regulations from when the application was submitted.
Started by the town, yeah.
To now.
So we need to.
The town, it was approved by the state at all.
Correct.
And, and the town agreed to it, and, and it's gonna stay as open space, no building's gonna be on it, you know.
So you're essentially asking the board to renew our approval?
Yes.
Because of the new regulations that the state.
Say that, that it's gonna stay open space, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna stay under agriculture until they take it over, then they're gonna have to pay a, a high tax right now.
Do we know when, was there actual letter or something that came from the board of selectmen originally on the approval, do you know?
I don't think so, it was from the planning, the planning board approved it, same thing as you in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, the planning board approved it.
Okay, so.
It was approved twice, the solar panels, the first guy pulled out, and, you know, going back and finding, and this had, they came in, he approved, it was approved, was upon the same stipulations, and it just took him a long time because of COVID, and.
All right, so I think, only thing we're struggling with is what to write in the letter, so, why don't we, it sounds to me like you, what you want to hear in the letter is that we, it's a matter of public record that it's under fifty-one A, it's a matter of common knowledge that it's a farmland and has been for generations.
It was built in the eighteen twenties, and the property had twenty-two acres, and it was always farming.
Right, okay.
At one time it was a cattle farm, and it went to a vegetable, and I continue to vegetable farming.
Okay, and then we also have, the town has previously approved the project, and we're still approving it, so why, why don't we try to draft a letter up and then have you look at it, or your engineer look at it, make sure that we're all talking about the same thing, because that's the only thing I think is confusing. Okay, so, we'll, we'll get, we'll get a, a letter drafted, and have you take a look at it, and you can send it to your engineer, and tell us if that's what you're looking for, and then we can formally do it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your consideration.
Sure, great.
All right.
Yeah, you can raise over there.
Yes?
Come on up. Jeremy Gillespie, nine minutes, so regarding the previous matter, I don't think the board of selectmen has anything to do here with this project, because this is a private matter on private property, the solar panels aren't gonna be providing the town electricity, if it's a priority habitat or national heritage, that's easy, you can look that up online through Mass G I S, and if it doesn't fall under endangered species, or possible habitat endangered species, a priority habitat, that's not on wetlands, then you can do whatever you want. I don't see where the board of selectmen has anything to do with what Mr. Dezzarella was talking about, I don't think, that, that's really, I don't think that falls under your duty, that's planning board, that's conservation, and if this property's been farming, it's for solar panels, that's fine, I don't think you guys.
That's why we'll do the draft letter and see where, if that's what.
I don't think you need to write a letter, I don't understand why.
Well, because he asked us to, so we'll look at it.
Why, but why?
Because he asked.
I don't think that, because he asked you to write a letter, but I don't think that's necessary.
I agree with you.
That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
All right. To, to ducktail off of Jeremy's point, would it be better to come from the planning board, where that was the original one? I mean, in his, in his act here in this letter, it says, regarding the support of the town of Halifax would be crucial.
So I think he's, he, he's mentioned he's playing, or has reached out to the board, it's a hell of a status for those, yes, he's put on agenda, and this isn't abnormal, you guys entertain different groups in town for support or not, Mobile Home Park, right?
Yeah, so, good point.
So I think, I think we get, let's, let's at least get a draft together and see if, because it's really this engineer, or whoever this guy is, John, John Seaman, whoever he is, that set the letter to Mr. Dezzarella, and so on and so forth, so, I mean, if, if it's not within our purview, it's not, it is, so.
Yeah, I can draft something based on facts, and we can put it on the agenda next meeting.
And I think if we make the letter a fact-based letter, of what the facts are, to your point, we've done similar things for other properties and owners in town, as far as like the Mobile Home Park and stuff, so.
If it's true, it's true.
Right, right.
So, all right, well, since Mr. Gillespie, oh yeah, since you're here, why don't we take up, as soon as Najah comes back, G, Alewife Restoration Committee charge and appointment, so, number G and H on our, our. Okay, so, Mr. Gillespie suggested that we revitalize, I guess, the Alewife Restoration Committee, which never really died, or has always existed. Have you seen our proposal here?
Yes.
Okay, well, let me read it, and I can give you to, so, referencing tonight, selectmen vote to resurrect the existing alewife restoration which had lay, which had lay dormant, I'm not sure that's correct, for several years, the committee shall have the primary function of restoring alewife, in parentheses, herring to the Montponsit Lakes, this shall be accomplished through the opening of block waterways along the alewife migration route, the committee shall also collaborate with town official, old colony planning council, and the state department of fisheries and wildlife to complete the necessary work. Does this run through Audubon also? I think it does.
I think it does.
It's split, the property line splits midway.
Yeah, so Audubon should be in there also, right? When you go.
Well, at least make sure it's not in it.
That the eastern half of that property is Audubon, the western half's wildlife.
Yes.
Okay, Alewife Restoration Committee shall provide periodic reports to the board of selectmen at least once every six months, such reports shall outline the status of their overall progress, any significant activities undertaken since the last report, and activities planned in the future. Alewife Restoration Committee shall consist of three members, all of which are at large, at-large, members appointed by the board of selectmen to serve three-year terms, it should probably stagger, shouldn't it?
Yeah, I think they open, they perpetuated. Well, they were previous, I got to keep that, and we don't have to have most or other committees, so it's.
I would, I would say we just keep them open.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so they'll be appointed by the board of selectmen, and we'll just delete that part. Members of the committee can have, membership on other committees in the town of Halifax, but are not required to. And then the Alewife Restoration Committee shall be supported by the conservation agent. Any comments, any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, I think the overall objective of the committee will be to no longer have to have the committee.
Jeremy, do you mind just coming?
Yeah.
So, so when people want to see it later, they're not gonna hear it, you know, so.
Jeremy Gillespie, nine minutes. So the ultimate goal of the committee is to eventually not have to have a committee. That means that all the useless dams that run through our roads and slow down the water are removed, and there's lots of work that has to be done for that, but eventually, I mean, I think, and gaining here is to have a free-flowing river that starts at the Montponsit and flows to the Saltucket, so, and when I discussed this with Brad Chase, that's kind of what he envisioned as one project, and because it goes to, you know, state DPW property, Mass Audubon, I think there's, Wildlands Trust is also involved, because they own an easement through Robins Reservoir, so, it's like. So it's like four entities, but they're all good ones, right? Like, they support this effort, I believe. And when I talked to Brad, it was basically like, he asked me, do we want to get herring back to Mont Ponce? And I said, absolutely, let's do it. So the ultimate goal of the committee is to work with everybody, anybody who's willing to support us. And not only will it, this help the fisheries industry by providing full space. It's also going to help with a lot of the other issues that we have as far as flushing the pond. Right now, there's a lot of issues going on between the exit of Mont Ponce down to the exit of Robins Pond, which is the Saltucket River. It's really a mess. It started over 100 years ago. It used to serve purposes, so three or four dams back then is served no purpose. They're clogging with debris. They're creating a health hazard, honestly, with mosquitoes and stuff. They're silting in. So I think the ultimate goal will be to, one, restore the native herring line. Two, restore the closed dump to its natural path. And that's it. And what's, and this can be done, you know, if you look at what they're doing on Silver Lake, the Jones River, you know, they've got rid of some of the box culverts that require constant maintenance because they basically sit up the surface of the water and collect debris. They clog up, a beaver dam busts. They go through the culvert and they clog, it's like a domino effect.
Yep.
Though, so what they're doing there is just opening that up, putting a real bridge there instead of a box culvert. Which, the box culverts used to be used to retain water for irrigation and stuff. There's, there's no sluices in anymore, they're just sitting there. They're just old relics. And these old relics are causing a lot of problems. So it's more, it's more about restoring the health of that river and the whole lakes.
We also have an appointment here for you. Do you have anybody else that, yet?
I have people to talk, but until anybody gets a townback form in their email. I've had people tell me they emailed it in, so.
Okay.
But we can't really have a committee without people willing to volunteer.
Encourage them to, to join, I suppose.
So if you approve the charge tonight, we can post it on the website with a copy of the charge and ask people to submit townback forms.
Can, we can, well...
I made those changes that you recommended.
We should make the, approve the charge. And then we can then appoint Jeremy, and go from there, okay. Any questions on the charge?
Do we need to include Audubon?
I do, I agree.
How about the Taunton River? Isn't it Taunton River?
Taunton River's there, too, council. I think you told me what's in your thought.
I think if you just list that and then say, any of all of that, particularly, just make sure we list this.
Blank it, blank it the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, motion on the charge?
Yes, I would love to approve the charge draft here for the restoration of the Ale, Alewife.
Alewife.
Alewife, sorry. Restoration Committee. We're, I don't know how much more detailing you need to get, it's always...
Sounds great.
Yep, and a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just, I think the initial members will be on the Mount Rushmore of this committee. Because I think your work is going to be front-heavy. And I think down the road, it'll be more making sure things are flowing. But I do think your initial three will be, will be the founding fathers and mothers, so I wish them luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then I will make that motion to appoint Jeremy Gillespie as a rep, what do we call him, a member?
Member.
A member of the Alewife Restoration Committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Good luck, Jeremy.
Okay, all right, now, let's get up here to the beginning of our work here. And we have approval minutes.
Approval of Selectmen's regular session, January 23rd, 2024.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, okay.
I move to approve the following warrants, commitments, payroll warrant number 77, $448,923.59. Vendor warrant number 78, for $308,833.82. Withholding warrant number 79, for $139,292.89. Amortals moving from February 12th, 2024 to February 18th, 2024, for $34,272.51.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I don't have a paper, I don't think, but we do have a request from the Boy Scouts.
Oh, it's just a year, that's why I didn't attach it, I didn't have anything attached.
So we have a request from the DSE, the Town of Halifax.
Yeah, that's yours, yeah.
For use of town, bring by the Boy Scout Bible Drive on April 27th. And again, on July 20th, those dates are open. And time is from 11:00?
Yeah, we're going around, seven, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Up to the morning, yeah.
From 7:00 AM to 1:00. Okay, do we have a motion?
So...
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. How about the tax possession custodian?
Uh, yes, so this has to do with the tax title process and foreclosure on properties. After they haven't, you know, people haven't paid their taxes for a very long period of time. We do have a few properties in order to move forward that process. But the board has to appoint a, it's a tax possession custodian. And so that would be Linda McCarthy, who is our treasurer collector. I've attached the languages, came from the council that we use for tax title, copula, copula. It's just, really just a formality, so Linda can continue with the process.
Okay, so I have a motion here, I'll make this motion. As provided under Master of the Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77B. I move to appoint Linda A. McCarthy, treasurer and collector of taxes for the Town of Halifax as tax possession custodian, who shall have the care, custody, management, and control of all property acquired by foreclosure, deed in lieu of foreclosure, or by treasurer's deed for unpaid taxes, and who shall facilitate the sale of possessed, uh, tax possession property under General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77B. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That change, sorry. The $20,000 for the fire department under the American Rescue, uh, American Rescue Act funding for the Fire Department, HBAC. I think I signed all that paperwork earlier, right? So what are we, just affirming?
Um, I don't think so. I don't think you were signing that one. There's, it was all going to sign it down.
You have to do anything for it.
So I would just need a vote. So this is, the fire department has some of those heat pump mini slips downstairs in the office area. So the captain's office, chief's office, and the executive assistance office. The chief in captain's office doesn't work at all right now, so all summer they live without air conditioning. And the executive assistance office, the machine's 12 years old, they have an expected life of 10 years. So we're on borrowed time there. So the thought was while we do the, the other offices, we might as well tie into one unit. It'll be cheaper to do it all at once. We need to do this. So it should commit a little less than 20, but I'd like to have the board approve the 20,000 just in case things go over a little bit. You never know, you know, when you start this type of work. And the idea of using the ARPA funding is, is we can put it under the public health category and through the county, which is part of, one of the categories we tapped against the money towards.
I hope they like the heat.
Okay. So why is we approve that 20,000 dollars?
Approve 20,000 dollars in ARPA funding for the fire department.
Do you have that motion?
I'll motion that.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Alright, Town's accountant interview.
Uh, yes, so as you know, a long-time town accountant, Sandy Norman's retiring in June. We're trying to be proactive, so we posted the position, we received several applications. So the next, uh, next step in the process would be to schedule interviews. I'd like to put together an interview team, so I'm Miranda that I drafted to the board. With what I would recommend, this is typical of what you see in other committees for an interview team. But, you know, we can discuss it and like get this team together so we can start getting dates down to get those interviews and then see what we have and then recommend someone to the board.
Okay. Sandy, you're here, do you have any thoughts about this?
No.
You're just an interested observer. It's better than what's up to you being here, so that's great. So the proposal is to have a, the town administrator, one selectman, one member of the finance committee, and a treasurer collector, right? How does the board feel about a selectman being on this committee? Since the Board of Selectmen will ultimately have to make the decision.
So I was, I mean, I was on a previous screening committee. I, granted, I think it was when it was just me, but...
So what you're saying is not...
Sure, right. I mean, I didn't have a problem with it, but you're, you're concerned, Jonathan.
Well, I think, I would prefer not to be on it myself, simply because I would rather... Do you ever take a fresh look at one of the persons?
Sure.
Or persons, if there's more than one that's recommended? As opposed to having already made that decision, that clue personally? But if you guys agree with the clue, then that, that would be fine. That's the only thing that would make these things, think about it.
Yeah, no, I personally don't have a problem with it, but I don't know, I just want to know what you think about having a selectman on the committee, you know?
Alright. So I'm not going to volunteer?
Oh, alright, I see. Now we're getting to the bottom.
There it is, so Jonathan.
No, I don't mind doing the work, but I just, my own preference is I would rather not have already said, okay, I agree that this is a good candidate when I have to then interview them a second time.
Sure.
So instead of having a selectman on there, who would we have? I could, no, no, I'm saying, well...
If we didn't put a selectman on there?
Because I can't, you say we have to interview them.
It could be, um...
Let me, I'll, I'll, we'll say for the record, I don't mind, I don't mind doing it, but, but if everybody doesn't want to do it.
What was the list again?
Town administrator, one selectman, one member of the finance committee, and the treasurer collector.
Okay, what if you did a department head instead of the selectman? Like a different department head?
Somebody different, like...
Yeah.
I would recommend that we stick with the financial, so if you want to do the assessor, she's part of our financial team.
I was thinking more like either the clerk or the assessor.
Town assessor or assessor? I'd recommend the assessor, because, you know, just the financial assessor, she's a part of our financial team. Yep. If you were ready to go that way, I would recommend that.
I, me personally, like I said, I just think that, you know, if you, if that person, whoever, has already gotten to the level of planning, that means we've already made a mind of it. I'm sure, I just would like to be, I think it's better to take it first.
Or reminded for us in the file.
You don't want me on it, Jonathan?
Try to save the matter, don't worry yourself.
So instead of selecting, do the principal assessor.
Yeah, and then the board will interview one or two of the remaining candidates, recommend it. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes. I will make a motion to create a town accountant interview team consisting of the town administrator, the principal assessor, one member of the finance committee, and our treasurer collector.
Good, I'll second that, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, town administrator, annual performance evaluation, we have done the evaluation. The performance, I guess. I don't have a great word to say here, it's just, we were very happy with the performance, it's done, done well. Hope he keeps it up. No, what else to say?
Sounds good.
Yeah, no, job well done, keep it, keep it up.
Okay.
We might have missed...
So we did get a, a letter of resignation from Steven Goodman, from the Conservation Commission. Please consider this my official resignation from my position on the Halifax Conservation Commission. My reasons are personal, and I appreciate respect for my privacy. Hopeful that this resignation does not preclude me from possibly returning to this or any other public position within the Town of Halifax in the future. Take a motion to accept his resignation.
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion, I was hoping that the board could send you the letter. You guys are okay with that? And I know he's a very, very passionate guy, so I wanted to thank him for his time and wish him well. So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation with the idea of the board sending him a letter of thanks.
Okay, I'll second that, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Appreciation to Representative Couter, Couter, Couter?
Cutler, like Cutlery.
Except the previous one.
Yep, like Cutlery.
Representative Cutler, so you have a letter on that or something?
We told Jonathan, asked that we put the signs, the letter.
Yeah, no, it's okay, so, so Josh Cutler has been our rep for quite some time. He has since left his position to take a position in the Healey administration. I think as a nice gesture, it would be nice to send him a letter of thank you and recognition of his service here for Halifax.
Okay, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I can drop something, we send it to you guys, if it looks good, we'll send it off.
Appointment of Barbara Curtis to Old Colony Elder Services Advisory Board.
So you may recall, we have a representative that serves on the Old Colony Elder Services Advisory Board. We didn't have a full-time outreach coordinator, so we have a part-time outreach coordinator doing this. Now that we have a full-time outreach coordinator, which is Barbara, it makes sense to have her represent Halifax. So this is just the board taking the vote, so we can let them know that she'll be our representative.
Okay, I'll make that motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just thanking Barbara, because I was on it for a hot second. And they speak a whole different language on that board, so Barbara, I thank you. You could see me here, thank you for, for agreeing.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those aye? Unanimous. Bobby wants to be Halifax representative to GATRA.
I don't know. Uh, so as you know, we joined GATRA, should have a contract before you at the next meeting, but we do now have a say on their advisory board. I attended the last two meetings, I think it was, or the last meeting. So at least for now, it makes sense then to continue. And then if we identify someone else in the future, we can make that change.
Are these just unlimited time, or is it for a year, or what?
Then they ask for any, just a re-appointment every year. This one is just because we're just joining, so, but they think go through the legal process, they allow us to.
So I'll move that we appoint the town administrator to the Halifax representative to GATRA.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I have a, some of the agenda, I do have a letter here from regarding the fire department.
Okay.
So we received a letter from the resident, Ms. Rose. Do you want to read it? So she says, I, I hope this message finds each of you well. I wanted to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation, gratitude for the incredible work of the town's fire department. The dedication and service provided by our fire department do not go unnoticed. I am generally thankful for their unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our residents, especially my elderly parents. Recently, Captain Jeff, Jake, and Dan went above the call of duty to protect my family when a faulty carbon monoxide detector went off in our home. They not only checked the truck for a carbon monoxide detector, but also installed one for us. Additionally, they checked and installed a carbon monoxide detector on another floor of the house, as well as smoke detectors. My father and I wouldn't have been able to do this without their help. I also want to express my gratitude to the paramedics for their dedication, compassion, care, and understanding they have shown to my father and family. He has some, has had some recent health issues that have required multiple calls, calls to EMS. Sometimes he refuses medical care when he needs it. And again, I appreciate the support, care, and help from the paramedics trying to keep my dad safe and receive the medical help he needs. Halifax Fire Department is a multi-talented crew, and Halifax is blessed to have such an amazing team serve our town. Thank you again to the fire department for the outstanding service they provide to our town. Warm regards, Isabella Rose. Well, that's very nice.
Awesome, great letter.
We should make sure this goes to the fire department, I assume? Has it gone there? Don't, don't.
I'm not sure, I think you're popular with intent there, but we'll make sure the specific firefighters get that as well.
Okay, we're led to the end of the agenda. Updates on usual, MBTA, Morse Brothers and Trading. MBTA, we do have something actually to talk about, a little bit.
Yes, so specifically here in Halifax, we're making some great strides with the zoning ballot review committee all around, but really with the MBTA zoning as well. We're hoping to... We're hoping to get the last of the information from our consultant who we've been working with, and submit a preliminary application to the state to see if kind of what we're thinking, and we'll move to state approval, and then we'll go from there, so that's very good news. And then I think, you know, John can discuss more about this, but you probably have heard the Town of Milton approved some zoning changes at their town meeting, then the community got together, and basically went forward with a rep writing vote, and they repealed the town meeting vote, and then just this morning, the attorney general announced that she is actually suing the Town of Milton for not being compliant.
Uh, yeah, it's right here, 30, 60 pages, so, I don't, I agree with the Town of Milton, I think this is heavy-handed and really a very bad example of legislative work in, which should be a democracy, but on the other hand, we have to keep in mind that that type of thing is what's going to happen, apparently the streets could be very aggressive about it. My biggest complaint, though, is that what, we're all approaching this in the wrong way. What we should be doing, and what we did try to do in the beginning, is having the state legislature appeal, or revise, or address this. I mean, to just simply crush our arms and stomp your feet and say, I'm not going to do it, just invites this kind of difficulty. What really should happen is our state representatives and state senators should be listening to the towns and hearing from the community, saying, you know, we think this is bad, and it should be addressed, and we can either repeal, or revise, or something. To me, that's what we should be doing, if we did that, we'd save a whole lot of trouble, so.
I know, I know, I know we have sent a letter before, John, is it worth, was it worth putting another one together as a reminder?
I think so, yeah, because we got no response from our state representatives, really, I mean, we had to write two, three times, or call them or something, to get them to acknowledge it, and they've never, you know, we asked them to come and explain to us why this is a good idea, and they never did. And I think, I think that's what needs to be done, I think the anger is misdirected, the anger is being directed at, like, you know, town officials, saying, well, you know, this is a rule, we're trying to, trying to do the best job we can, which is what the zoning committee is trying to do, but the anger should be addressed at the people that created this mess, which is a state license.
Yeah, I think with Milton being in the news, it's, it's always been a hot topic, but I feel like the attention is even greater now with what happened in Milton, so I think it might be a nice opportunity to, to jump on that with our elected officials and.
So, we'll write a letter, revise our letter that we wrote the last time, I wrote it on a year and a half ago.
Yeah, it was great, it was perfectly done.
And it, just, again, that's how things are supposed to change in democracy, so.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or you can just do it?
Yeah, we'll take a motion, sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to write a letter to our town, I'm sorry, state representatives, reminding them about our opinion that.
Objections?
Objections to the new MBTA zoning requirements.
All right, I'll conclude the second, so we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Morse Brothers, sorry, they moved some sand?
It appears they have, and we have reminded them that they have been approved current, they need to act under the parameters of that permit, so we did, sent them a reminder of that yesterday, that if, you know, they are, so yeah, it's fine, but they do need to comply with all the conditions of that permit.
Okay, anything else on training or your update?
Uh, no, no updates for training, as far as just general staffing and operations, we have sent an offer letter out for our assistant town accountant, so we can get them on board on the middle of the month. Our conservation agent is unfortunately leaving us, so we will be advertising for that, also advertising for the administrative assistant in that department, so we may look at some creative opportunities for there. You see, we built a police patrolment position, which is great, and just operationally, we're preparing budget, and we're kind of in the thick of things with the budget, process has gone very well this year, and then town meeting, we're drafting a town meeting warrant, the warrant will close on the 12th, and then we'll have you guys hold on it on the 26th, so it comes quick.
Okay, so, we had adjourned our executive session, so we could pick up our regular meeting closer to one time, so I think what we do, we adjourn this meeting.
So, you go, you go back to executive session and not adjourn in the opportune to.
So, we will adjourn this meeting, we can go back into executive session, we'll not be coming out into public session, so that's my motion, do you have a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, Mr. Nezaro?
Yes.
Mr. Sealan?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Thank you.